Again, my mic wasn't on. I'd like to welcome everyone who's here today. To listen and learn what we have been working so hard for many, many years. To get this project going and I think that I and others in the community are very excited about it, very eager to get it going. So first of all, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the call for what you can and I forgot the individual's vote. Okay, all those who have cell phones, pagers or the like, please set them to the comment mode or turn them off. Of course, this is not applied to the on duty emergency response personnel. If you wish to address the commission, you must stand and be recognized at the podium and give your name and your address. Speakers are limited to three minutes and one appearance per subject. A roll call, please.
Okay, Chaperone Gloria Vasquez, chairperson.
President.
Commissioner Tansia Vargas.
President.
Commissioner Adrian Paco.
President.
Commissioner Alex Ramirez.
President.
Okay, first I'll read you of the public notice for everyone who may not be here tonight. This meeting is being conducted in accordance with the State of California Executive Order N. Twenty nine twenty, which is dated March seventeenth, twenty twenty regarding the COVID nineteen pandemic. The public may participate in person or online via Zoom or calling one, one six six nine, nine hundred, six eight three three. And use meeting number eight, two, two, zero, six, one, 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 nine, six, nine. If you wish to make a general public comment or comment on a specific agenda item, please use the raise hand motion. And you will be allowed three minutes to make your comments. If you choose not to attend the meeting but wish to comment on a specific engine meeting, please submit your comments limited to two hundred and fifty words or less by noon of the day of the meeting. Okay. Item number two, business from the public. Business from the public not on the agenda. Any member of the public may address the commission for a period not to exceed again three minutes on any subject not on the agenda. The commission will listen to all accommodations, but may take no action. So anyone from the public wanna say something? Three, three minutes for everyone. Your name and address, yes.
You do not need to say your address, you don't have to give us your address.
My name is Angelica. Do I start now?
Yes.
Good evening, city council members and community members. My name is Angelica and I am a young professional working in Salinas and I currently live in Southern County. Like many others in my situation, I would love to live in Gonzalez and to be part of this community, to put down my roots and to contribute to the local economy.
Angelica.
Right now.
You know, we're gonna have a.
Oh, apologies, my bad, sorry. Yeah, 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 no worries. Okay, sorry.
Okay, anyone else in the audience now?
We do have Spanish translation for anybody wishing to have a headset for live translation, please.
Alguien que no comprende inglés tenemos transacciones para los que quieran oír tenemos. Acá este lado me parece los teléfonos, los micrófonos aquí. Para que puedan oír lo que estamos diciendo en inglés. Okay, any through Zoom or? Anybody?
Nobody via Zoom.
No? Okay, so we'll close that part of the portion. Okay, regular agenda. Consider approval of resolution PC two, zero, two, five, zero, one. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending the city council certification of the Vista Lucia Project Financial Environmental Impact Report. Adoption of the mitigation monitoring report program and adoption of. Sequa findings of fact and statement of overriding considerations. Also, resolution number PC two, zero, two, five, dash, two. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council approval of an amendment of the Gonzales General Plan. And approval of the List Lucia Specific Plan. Another one, resolution PC two, zero, two, five, dash, three. A resolution of the planning commission of the City Gonzales recommending. City council adoption of an ordinance approving the pre-zoning of the Vista Lucia. Project area to zoning districts as designated in the Vista Lucia Specific Plan. Resolution PC two, zero, two, five, dash, four. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council adoption of an ordinance approving a development agreement by and between the City of Gonzales and the. Celo Grande Ranch LLC relative to the development known as the Vista Lucia. Another one, resolution number PC two, zero, two, five, dash, five. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending approval of the city council of the Vista Lucia Blocks one through eight tentative map. Of seven hundred and ninety-six building lots accommodating one thousand two hundred and forty-seven units and forty-nine common lots on a project site. Of two hundred and thirty-five and a half plus acres located east of the Fano Road, which is Monterey County Assessor Plaza's number. Two, two, three, zero, three, one, zero, two, seven, and zero, two, four. Lastly, the last one is PC two, zero, two, five, zero, six. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council approval. Of the initiation of the seven hundred and seventy-one acre annexation request with the Monterey County Local Agency Formation Commission, also known as LAFCO. We will, I think, be discussing each one, one by one. Okay, that report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for that. Sounded very complicated and I hope today to have it be smooth and informative for us. I'm Tavon Kinison Brown with the City of Gonzales Planning Department and I'm joined here by Brent Slama Consulting, who. He and I, as well as others professionals in the room, have been working on this for many years. It has a twenty-year history. And all that that you just read, we're just gonna call is the Vista Lucia Project. And we can be able to talk about it very freely and then towards the end of the end of our presentation, we'll kind of get back to the structure with six different. Items that will require your action. So I just wanted to start a little bit here. This, this project has twenty years of history and effort on the city's part. But who's it for and who are we? In the next slide, there's just a few bullet points, just to kind of refresh. That we are a diverse community and a community that is built out and desperately needs housing for its residents. And and it represents all walks, we represent all walks of life and industries where teachers, police officers, firefighters, managers, supervisors, line workers, field workers. Business owners, professionals, educators, service providers and service users. We have businesses with a hundred years plus heritage and family names dating back to the founding of the city. We have new families and new generations here with new graduates who want to establish roots, who are desperately looking for a home to call their own. So that's a little bit and I'm sure, yeah, anybody in this audience, we could have someone give us another beautiful paragraph that's completely different from this that shows the spectrum of. The people that live in our community. So with that, I'd like to take the next slide, which is gonna just talk about the structure of our presentation this evening. As we'll have Mr. Brent Slama here present some of the specific, the specific plan project and its major components. And, you know, we'll try to not to speak so general that we lose folks or that we don't understand and not so specifically that it takes, we really bog things down. So we're gonna try to find that balance. And then it'll shift back to me to kind of give guidance to the planning commission to walk through the several documents that. Start out with the environmental review and end with a recommendation to LAFCO, the Local Agency Formation Commission. Following staff's presentation, we're gonna invite Pembroke Development Group to make a presentation to the City Planning Commission. They will not be limited by three minutes. They've been at this twenty years. We're gonna give them the courtesy. Following that, it's anticipated, we take public comments and hear what some of the concerns are in, in the, in the gallery. And then shift back to the commission during this whole public hearing format where we imagine you may have questions for staff or consultants. Or even with Pembroke Development Group. And so after that point, we would shift and you would probably close the public hearing and then consider and deliberate. The resolutions before you. And just, just in a nutshell, though, this is the planning commission this evening is being asked to make a recommendation to the city council, who would be the final city. The final city agency to consider the Vista Lucia project. And then following an affirmative action from the city council, we take a whole application to what's called the Local Agency Formation Commission and. Other people will help decide whether we grow into the, into that project area. So thank you. With that, I'd like to advance the slides and introduce Mr. Brent Slama. Thank you.
Thank you, Tavon. It's great to be with you, Madam Chair, members of the planning commission, Brent Slama here, members of the public. Back in November, we had a big workshop combined with the planning commission and city council. So we've gone over. A lot of these materials previously, so I want to, one, for those that weren't here, want to cover the material, but also make sure we don't. Go too in detail for things that we've already talked about. So like Tavon said, trying to strike that balance. The first thing, of course, is where is this project? If anybody has a question, so. We'll try this microphone, see if this will be a little cleaner. So if you are yourself to the City of Gonzales to the northwest, you see US one oh one. This property, this project is on the east of the City of Gonzales along Fano Road and then goes to the east on the northeast side. And this is important because the project's been anticipated since two thousand and ten in the Gonzales General Plan and two thousand and fourteen. With Monterey County LAFCO. And the reason that's important is because the city and the county and LAFCO agreed that growth. Like this would go to the east away from the Salinas River, away from the most productive agricultural land. So the city has agreed essentially to not grow on the west, the north or the south of the city. In exchange for that, our agreement with the county is that we will grow to the east and this development secures development to the east. Away from the most productive farmlands of the river. Next slide, please. Seven hundred and seventy-one acres located along the eastern edge, as we said, on Fano Road. There's a variety of different property sizes. We'll talk more in detail about the types of housing that are gonna be offered here. How to lots of housing types and different price points for different people in different stages of life that want to. Live here in Gonzales. So that goes all the way from your regular single-family homes to smaller apartments rental opportunities. Vista Lucia community over the time of the build-out, which we anticipate to be around thirty years. Three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight units. Sounds like a lot of units, but we've talked about that it's not gonna come at all at once. It comes in stages and phases and it gives the opportunity for the city to respond to the market as housing. Gets developed. It includes seventy-nine acres of parks, three school sites, a commercial mixed-use zone. We've talked about the first phase that you're looking at today, the first tentative map is approval for one thousand two hundred and forty-seven. And we'll talk a little bit about what that looks like on the map. But constantly being able to put in residential units in the, in the supply is an important thing. And it will be dependent upon the market and having the available infrastructure to serve. Next slide, please. This is the, this is the big map for those that are not familiar with it. Take a look at it. So down on Fano Road. Up at the top is what is known right now as Associated Lane, hoping to rename it to Vista Lucia Parkway. And it will connect eventually to US one oh one and the Northern Interchange. The development will typically go, as you see the numbers from the bottom left-hand corner, so closest to the shopping center. It's on Fano Road, it's north of the shopping center, but that will start in that direction. There's a proposed elementary school at, on Fano Road. That would come in in the first phase. And then as you see those additional numbers, it would grow out to the, to the east. So numbers two. These are, these are called blocks. They do not necessarily have to be developed in order, but typically it will go where the infrastructure goes and that's important. We'll discuss that. But as you can see, over all the years it'll take to build, eventually you get out to phase thirty, which goes all the way to Iverson Road. Next slide, please. We talked about, you're looking at a map today, a tentative map and a base. So this is a big project. And according to LAFCO policies and procedures, we're looking at. The annexation of the, of the entire territory and then splitting it into four phases to help manage growth. This is what we would consider phase A. So the first annexation to the city would be this area in purple, which covers the first six blocks. As you see on the map here. Next slide, please. The housing plan enables a variety of price points. So what we talked about was. For those that are looking for traditional single-family housing in a subdivision, we have proposed nine hundred and ninety-five units that the developers propose. Then we have opportunities for smaller units. This, these are lots that are smaller, have smaller yards. Lower the price point. One thousand two hundred and thirty-nine of those to six to nine dwelling units an acre. We have townhomes and apartments for medium dense, medium high density, five hundred and four of those in the plan, one hundred and four mixed-use units that go with commercial services. And then six hundred and twenty high-density apartments. And these are especially where you will have the affordable housing opportunities. Next slide, please. So here's some pictures to talk, what we're talking about, whether it's single home, single-family homes, apartments, definitely many options for housing here in this project. Next slide, please. One of the things when we had our workshop back in November, we talked a lot about the Affordable Housing Plan and what that means for the city. The developers donating two of those blocks that were shown on the map, block six and block twenty-five to a nonprofit builder or to the city. Currently, you have correspondence on the desk from CHISTA. The applicant has entered into an MOU with CHISTA. Who is a nonprofit housing provider to move forward on that. That's their agreement. But they will be donating those sites and the goal would be that a nonprofit such as CHISTA would end up developing these units. Those would be low-income or very low-income units and that is set at certain amount of money. The, the amount that you would charge rent is based on your income. It doesn't exceed thirty percent of your personal income, your household income. Also, later in the project, which is in a different phase, there's another site, block twenty-five, the same thing. Down, down the road a bit. And then there's also provision for forty-nine self-help, self-help homes between blocks three and twenty. And these are where. The people, applicants are selected, they physically help construct the, the home. And work with other neighbors in their community to put up, you know, do electrical, do frame and do the things that they have can to help reduce the cost. So it ends up being low, low-income housing opportunity for ownership. And we talked about that at the last meeting as well. So those are opportunities that are available. Next slide, please. As part of the Affordable Housing Plan, we're looking at a range of property sizes and unit sizes built in the project areas. Those are the different price points. We're looking at capacity for accessory dwelling units. Those are ADUs. Those are the units that are in the backs of homes sometimes or can be attached so that you can have. Additional people at your house or if you need something for extra generations, an additional unit. And then also funding to administer the Affordable Housing Program. More than likely, that'd be a third-party or a nonprofit agency that would manage. The people that apply for the housing, the people that sign up for, I think last meeting we, you talked about a lottery. You know, so to find who would be eligible and may go through all the screening criteria and everything like that. So that would be there. There was a letter in the correspondence you received from MBAP. Asking about a request to make sure there's infrastructure to serve block six. And that's something that we have worked with the developer in our development agreement to assure that when. And that's something that we have worked with the developer in our development agreement to assure that when block six. Is ready to develop, that developer, after they build blocks one and two, will be able to provide those, the infrastructure. To serve that property on block six where the affordable, first, uh, affordable housing block goes. Uh, so wanted to comment on that. Next slide. Yep, so lot, a lot of park space. Um. You see all that green space represents parks. You also have a comprehensive trail network with the promenades. And the street network, we'll talk about that in a little bit. You'll see some graphics, but, uh, a couple of pocket parks which would have. Playgrounds and other facilities and two large community park sites. The first one, uh, will be donated by the one-thousandth unit of the project. Um, that's the community park. On the left side, the one on the right side is a little after that. Um, but those will be planned by the community and depending on the community's needs. Figure out what amenities to be there. And that's the type of fields that can hold, uh, sports fields, soccer fields, softball, that type of thing, basketball courts, et cetera. Next slide, please. One of the things is how do you get around? I know that was one of the comments from the last meeting was about traffic. Um, one of the main things is traffic on Fifth Street getting across the freeway. Prior to the construction of the first house or completion of the first house, they will connect Fano Road. So Fano Road kind of goes into a, it's a farm road. That you can get to Associated Lane, but not very conveniently. So they will, uh, push Fano Road to be a interim two-lane road. Straight up to where Associated Lane is, and then Associated Lane will be improved to a two-lane road to go out to the freeway. Um, and that will help move a lot of the traffic away from Fifth Street, especially the traffic that will be serving this development. We'll be able to use that Northern Interchange. Um, and then within the development, you see the network of streets. And the hierarchy of streets, which means the smaller streets that go into the bigger streets and gets you out to Fano Road and Vista Lucia Parkway. Next slide, please. It's not just about cars. This is also about bicycles and pedestrian activity. And so you see that each of those. Um, pedestrians, bicyclists and automobiles have their own dedicated space, which is great. Uh, lots of green space and the ability to, um, be connected. That mobility is important to the developers in this project. So you have separate sidewalks. Um, bike paths and travel lanes. Next slide. Inside the specific plan or the development standards, as we talked about, different types of density. Uh, you've been able to, we talked about this more in detail at the last workshop, um, but the types of units that fit. On into these plans. So this one here shows a medium density. We talked about those, uh, small lots. Where you may, um, you have a, you have a detached single-family home, but a small yard. Maybe a person that doesn't want to deal with a big backyard, for example, and you may like that opportunity. Um, this one here, medium high density, the second image, the one on the right, shows attached, uh, row houses. Townhouses, okay. Next slide. Infrastructure. Next slide. Oh, this is the second one. This is, this shows the medium dense, excuse me, medium density and the low density. So these are smaller densities. Um, this, this represents your typical subdivision home in the low-density zone. Thank you. Infrastructure planning, um, we talked about the, the need to connect Fano Road. Um, to make it a legitimate two-lane roadway connected to Associated Lane, Vista Lucia Parkway, and then connected to Highway one O one. Um, there are a number of sewer pipes that have to be enlarged to get to the sewer plant. And sewer plant expansion will be required. The city is working on that as we speak. Um, through expanding the capacity over there and be able to handle the sewer. And all those technical reports, um, were made available to you and are available to the public if you have any. Questions about those. Same thing with water pipes. There's a whole plan for new pipes, new wells, new tanks to serve the development. Um, where does the stormwater go when it rains? There's provisions for drainage systems. Typically, the, the property goes from its high point in the. Southeast corner. Um, over at, by Johnson Canyon Road, that, that direction, southwest towards the intersection of where Fano and Associated will be. Um, we have infrastructure, obviously, to put in the parks, to put in the school sites. Although the, the construction of the schools is ultimately the responsibility of either the Gonzalez Unified School District or. Uh, other educational entity that may use those. Um, we've been working with them to make sure that these sites are secured. And then there's also provisions for a public safety facility on the other side. So a secondary fire station. Uh, to help with level of service times. Next slide, please. When we look at. Uh, a project, the first thing you'll look at when you take action, you, you do today will be on the environmental impacts to the project, to, to the city, to. And we talked about this in a lot more detail last time, but we have a lot of things that we had to look at. Um, conversion of ag land is a major one, um, that we've talked about. We'll talk about a little bit more. Um, air quality concerns, biological resources, we've looked into that significantly. Uh, cultural tribal resources, respecting those that were here first, greenhouse gas emissions, one of those. Um. And along with air quality, we talked about the natural gas, um, not being in the project. We talked about EV charging. Would be mandatory per state law. Um. Hazardous materials, noise, water, wastewater, transportation, all things that we've covered. Before, and of course, if you have further questions or the public has further questions specifically, we, you can ask them later. Um, but I know we went through a lot of this at the last workshop. Next slide, please. One after that. So we did issue a final EIR in the draft EIR. We had multiple agencies that, uh. And organizations that made comments. Uh, those are the organizations that commented on that. We responded to all those comments and those are located in the final EIR. Uh, if you're interested in reading those. We did receive a couple additional comments, um. The, after we posted the agenda and prior to the, uh, prior to this hearing from, uh, Laughco. And also one from, um, the Monterey Ag, Agaland Trust. And those had to do with agricultural mitigation. Um. We. We have a program, we have an ordinance in the city where if you, uh, that you probably remember that. You know, Tavon worked on significantly where if you convert farmland, you need to mitigate for that. Either through securing an easement, um, of farmland or paying an in-lease fee. Uh, Monterey County Laughco also has a policy on agricultural mitigation. Um, where you have to seek to make a good face effort to identify those easements. The preference is to find easements. And if they can't do that, to be able to then take an in-lease fee. There was some concern in the correspondence from Laughco that. We weren't recognizing the Laughco agricultural mitigation policy. Um, the city and the, the developer have in our development agreement that we will follow the Laughco policy, which is more restrictive. And so we will be, um, adjusting the mitigation measure in the EIR to, to address that. Later, when we get to the, uh, the decision-making, at that point, the. Community Development Director and the, uh, city attorney can speak more to that. Um. The letter from the Ag Trust was similar about understanding about mitigations. Um, there was some concern that that wasn't in there. It definitely is. It's a condition of approval that refers to the. Mitigation monitoring program that requires the city to, or requires the developer to comply with all agricultural mitigation. And specifically, in that case, it would be the Laughco agricultural mitigation policy. Our EIR consultant, the EIR has a thick document when you looked at it, uh, Ron System is here in the building. If you have any specific environmental questions, he will be here and I would recommend that you direct those. To him about any of those issues we talked about, about the environment. So thanks, Ron, for coming today. Next slide, please. Money fiscal impacts, right? What happens when you build a project? The biggest thing that I wanted to share as far as the fiscal impacts go is that when you're growing in your city, you need to be able to have the development pay its own way. Um, that you don't raise taxes on existing residents just to pay for future resident services. So how do you do that? The development pays its own way through the following. One is the collection of impact fees. So when a home is built, they pay a one-time fee to cover police services, fire services, traffic. Um, water, wastewater, for example, to build those systems, to build that infrastructure. And that's paid per each house and unit. They also collect school district fees that go to the school district, those don't click it over to the city, uh, regional traffic fees. Um, the other, the next piece, and this is a big one, is there'll need to be the formation of an assessment district or a, uh. Community facilities district in this case. Um, and that is to pay for ongoing maintenance. Whether it's lights, landscaping, onto, uh, staffing costs. Or needing, when you have more parks, you need more public work staff. When you have a new fire station, you need to serve it. And so making sure that there's money to have the city pay for its services. Um, and then, of course, when you have new residents, you collect more property tax and you collect more sales tax. So when you combine those three elements. Um, per our general plan, we want to make sure that the project is paying for itself and that you're not having to subsidize from the rest of the city to pay for the new development. Next slide. I know it's a lot of materials, but, um, it's a big project. We have a development agreement and that is an agreement between the city and the developer. That goes over a whole number of things and you have, you have those documents also that were given to you, uh, well in advance. Um. And the development agreement does a few things. It gives the developer certain rights and it gives the city certain rights that are negotiated and specified. Um. For one, for the developer, it gives them the right to develop. And the big thing is it, it gives them time to develop such a big project. Normally, when you approve a permit, it may have a lifespan of one or two years. Um, this gives a twenty-year lifespan with the opportunity for expense, extension. Um, to keep the project moving. Uh, affordable housing obligations, we've kind of covered over those with the donations of the lots, the, the infrastructure that's coming in. Payment of impact fees. So the agreement is that they will pay the impact fees that are, that will be in place at the time. When they pull their permits so that, and we have to adjust our fees all the time based on inflation and, and the needs of the city. And so they've agreed that as we go along. So that way in fifteen years, when we update the fees, they'll pay, and they build a house fifteen years from now, they'll pay those fees. Um, there's going to be a community improvement contribution, which is a separate thing. It's not something that we would charge a new house. Outside this development, that will go specifically to help the city and, and their programs, things like the community center or other specific programs. Agricultural mitigation, we've talked about that multiple times. That's something that we, and it's, and the developer have agreed to follow Laughco's rules as far as it goes to agriculture mitigation. A lot about the construction of the public improvements. How, for, how do, do the roads get built? How do the pipes get built? For example, the applicant will be building, and when? The applicant will be building the first, the interim improvements on Fano and, uh, Vista Lucia Parkway. And then there's a plan of how they get reimbursed down the road for some of those costs through, uh, impact de-credits or others. And then what things the city is building, for example, the city is fully responsible to build the plan. That's not something we're going to impose on the developer, for example. And all those are laid out in this development. Next slide. Talks about phasing, and that is to make sure that it grows in a general direction, but they're not fixed to have to follow those numbers specifically. Uh, the dedication to land for public use, so they will be dedicating to the city park spaces. They'll be dead, they'll be dealing with, like we said, the school spaces. The, uh, the roads, the drainage ponds, a site for a well, the fire station piece. You know, there's a lot of land that's all specified in that agreement. Uh, we talked about Fano and this Lucia, we, their contributions to the interchange. So. We've been looking at how many units or how many, uh, yeah, how many units can, uh, adequately. Use that new road before the Northern Interchange needs improvements. Uh, because at some point, there's what will be interim improvements, because right now, the Northern Interchange, you have stop signs. Eventually, that will be converted to either a signal or roundabout. And then you will have, down the road, you will need to actually widen the bridge at the northern, uh. In a, the northern US one O one Alta Interchange in the Gonzalez. And so it specifies when those improvements are to take place. And also that the developer will agree to work with us in the creation. Of a financing district to make sure that we can afford the, uh, ongoing maintenance and, um, services that will be required over there. Next slide. This is the tentative map. So as we mentioned, the first phase of this project is one thousand two hundred forty-seven units. We anticipate. That can be a, about a seven-year build-out under normal conditions from the day you actually start building homes. Um, so we'll be working on this one for some time. Um, this kind of gets down to the individual lot. It shows exactly where, where the lots are. It shows where the, uh, affordable apartments go. It shows where the first park sites go and it shows where the school goes, and it really drills down into the details of what those streets look like in that first phase. And so you'll be looking at that tonight. Next slide. With that map, there are a lot of conditions of approval. Um, I don't, I didn't go over all of them, but some key ones. Obviously, any approval by the city council will be contingent upon annexation by Laughco. So as Tavon mentioned, there are multiple steps in this process. Um, developer's responsible for all the costs that come with processing this project. Uh, they'll pay the fees, they'll create a district and there's all the, um. It has specific conditions about the Affordable Housing Block Six and the Block Three Self-Health Units. All right, um. This is, this is my last slide. And so, um, yeah, imagine that. Um, of course, as you've been writing notes and comments, um. You know, we'll look forward to answering your questions. You, I know you asked a number of questions at the November hearing, uh, the workshop with the city council. Uh, those questions were answered on pages eighteen, nineteen and, uh. Beyond in your staff report, those specific questions that you asked, um, at the last meeting. So if you want to, if, if you decide you need to go back to those and have any follow-ups, we'll be happy to answer those as well as any new questions you have today. Um, so. This is where we are in the project. We had a joint workshop. We have been completing agreements. We put out the final EIR and right now we're at a public hearing for the planning commission. The next step is we will have a public hearing. Uh, depending on how you, you go today, um, going to city council and ultimately the Laughco like Tavon mentioned before. So I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to let Tavon talk about, uh, the, the process unless you have anything that's. Signing, any questions to clarify for staff on the stuff I talked about right now, or you want to just wait till it. We go through time.
Yeah, thank you. Before, before I hit my next slides, I just want to stress, um, what was on a, a, a couple of slides earlier. Is the dependent upon annexation. This land area is not in the city limits right now, but it is all the homework, all the planning, all the studies, all the financing. To basically let the public know and the political leaders in the local city know that when we bring this into the city, here's our plan. Here's the regulation. All right, but it doesn't stop at the city council. We have to go to Laughco and it might need that we bring representatives from the community to share. As well, their need for housing so that that annexation can happen. And that means that we would. Then have that within our city limits and we would administer this plan like we've laid out. So that, I just can't stress how important that is. So in front of you, um, and on the, the. Um, which is recommending approval of the amendment to the general plan to show those colorful new map areas as being part of the city of Gonzalez with the plan. Um, and the approval of the Vista Lucia specific plan. The next slide shows that, um, you're going to take an independent action in PC Resolution. Number three, uh, recommending the pre-zoning, that nice little colored map that, uh, has the zoning districts. That was going to have all those different housing sizes and the schools and everything there. Resolution number four. Um, is, uh, acknowledging, uh, that you're going to recommend. um, is uh, acknowledging uh, that you're going to recommend, asking for recommendation city council on the development agreement by and between the city of Gonzalez and Sierra Grande Ranch. And that was all the timing and all those components regarding phasing and what gets done before the others. Um, the, the fifth resolution is um, on the tentative map, kind of almost, almost the same shape as the, that purple map, but the first twelve hundred and forty seven homes. So roughly one quarter of the project, uh, a project area. Um, and twelve hundred forty seven, that's really about, uh, about a thousand homes and little, and about two hundred, two hundred and eleven apartment units. That's what the twelve hundred and forty seven is. So we'll get a spectrum of those different price points uh, built into this first twelve hundred and forty seven units. So we'll be asking you to act on that. And then lastly, um, is asking for resolution planning commission to recommend that the city council approve initiation of our request to LAFCO to bring these farmland areas into the city of Gonzalez so that we can administer the building permit program and get going. That's what we want to do. And so just uh, just as a refresh on the next slide is how we anticipate the format to go here. Um, certainly, Madam Chair, you're welcome to intervene if you have another way to go there. But we would like to hear a presentation from Pembroke Development Group. And following that, we'll have public comments, we'll see if there's any trends in those public comments. And then the commission would uh, be free to take questions of both staff or, or consultants um, and Pembroke Development Group. And then we'll bring it back to you for actions. I'll put those blue slides back up so we can take heat on the resolution. So that concludes the first volley of the staff presentation. Um, Madam Chair, would you be ready to hear from our applicant today, right now? Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Now, we have one public hearing, but we can put the slide up as a placeholder. We're talking about all of these. Um, I'm sorry, did you think it was six public hearings? No, okay. Yeah, we're not going to open and close, open and close. We'll be asking for, uh, when we get to the resolutions, a motion, a second, and a vote. Motion, second, and a vote, six times.
Yeah, but would the, would the public be able to comment or ask questions about each individual one is whatever's asked.
Um, when we open it up for public comment, uh, we'd probably prefer that they speak to it now. Um, if, unless there's another recommendation. Yeah, we, we prefer that they, so what is the pub-
Go ahead. The public comment section will be for questions on any of the resolutions or any other questions that anybody might have.
Yeah, okay, but that would be after the Pembroke.
That would be after the Pembroke presentation, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Tavon. Okay, representative for Mr. Pembroke.
Madam Chair, members of the Gonzalez Planning Commission. Uh, I'm Glenn Pace and I'm the manager of Pembroke Development. Um, we are land developers, we are thank you. We, we are not builders. Uh, so the only thing that we can do through our planning and entitlement endeavors is to create the opportunity for others to actually build the homes. We do not build the homes. Um, and, and this is what we've done in this Lucia, and we spent uh, a lot of time working on the, working with staff on the planning and, and the entitlement portions of it. And thank you for your reports, Brent and Tavon, appreciate that. Um, I'd like to, well, first of all, I, I first entered this room twenty-four years ago to propose, um, we, we do a project in this community. And uh, I'd like to maybe just philosophize a little bit, if I may, because you've already gone through the details, et cetera, et cetera. Um, let me tell you what I see as my perfect housing world. Um, I, I see all families in Gonzalez being able to own a home. Now you say, is that realistic? But tha- that's my vision, if we can do it. This will provide them with the opportunity to create generational wealth, an opportunity that has been denied to many for various reasons. Uh, it is very clear that homeownership is one of the best ways to grow this generational wealth. Um, I, I've seen studies where the, those that own homes have forty times the net worth of those that rent homes. And just, just absolutely amazing, uh, the benefit to the people who actually own homes. For some, um, I see the rental of homes as a transition to ultimately owning a home. And, and this this entered into the way we planned this whole project, if you bear with me. Um, but I still believe the ultimate objective for families should be to own a home. That's my just personal philosophy. I'm telling you this because I believe that the definition of affordable housing should be broadened to include ownership as well as rental units. Um, however, for various reasons, a lot of people, we understand that aren't in a position to actually purchase a home now. And, and understand that, and there are many reasons for that. But I don't think that should take away the, the objective, the vision of some, of everybody in this room, everybody in this community, someday being able to own a home. And tha- that was built in, we, we started doing our land planning, that, that philosophy was built in. Uh, I remember talking to, to the mayor many, many years ago that people want to own a home, they go away to college or, and come back and there's, there's no place for them to live. But they want a, to own a home, not to rent a home. So we built in a lot of small lot, and I think this was referenced in the thing, small lot homes where they can actually have ownership of those, and those would be at the lower price points. Um, as, as Brandon mentioned. So um, to aid in the implementation of this, we designed the project not only for renters, but also for first time home buyers, which, which I think is very, very important. Uh, for example, thirty-six percent, over thirty-six percent of the total project will have attached units. Well, why is that important? Attached units are the least expensive units to build by any, any builder. Which means, and, and those uh, attached units can take many forms. They can be apartment buildings for rental, or it could even be condos. They could be townhouses, it could be various forms of cluster homes and so forth. But these are, allow people to actually um, get the homeownership, whi- which here again, I think is very important. Um, of that thirty-six percent, uh, those, some of those will be rentals and some of those will be uh, homeownership type units. The um, we are partnering with Chispa on uh, what's referred to as block six, and it'll be two hundred and eleven apartment units for low and very low people. And we have an MOA with them at this point. Um, similarly, in uh, this second neighborhood, we have another block and we will partner up perhaps with Chispa or, or some other nonprofit for another two hundred and eleven, uh, very low and very low, low, low and very low rental apartments. Much, much has been said about the size of the project. And it's big, there's no question with this, and, and relatively small community and, and so forth. But it is the only, it's only through doing a major project like this that we could afford to provide the amenities that the people of Gonzalez want. Um, some of the amenities are, one, uh, for instance, the twenty acres we're donating for the low and very low uh, rental units. Um, the uh, creation of a program for sweat equity units. The uh, donation of land for a fire station. The um, three educational sites, that's forty-one acres of land, which would be for the uh, the school sites. Seventy-nine uh, acres of new parks, seven miles of walking and bicycle trails, a system of landscape promenades. And as mentioned, the improvement of associated lane to be renamed Vista Lucia Parkway and the extension of Fano Road to Vista Lucia Parkway. These amenities, in addition to the many jobs and the economic vitality that will be created in Gonzalez uh, as a result of the buying power of the residents of Vista Lucia. It, it, it will provide a lot of amenities, restaurants, businesses and so forth, as well as jobs. So I don't want to go into any, any more detail, you've already covered the uh, the technical things and so forth, but I, I just want you to understand that I've been working on this for twenty-four years. I've met a lot of people in this community, and I think I have a pretty good feeling of the needs of the community uh, in the way of affordability, not only from the rental market, but also for the purchase market for some smaller units or townhouses or attached units and so forth. So that was been our philosophy, and I think we've accomplished that uh, in Vista Lucia, so hopefully you'll agree. If you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer them, thank you.
Thank you so much for coming over and explaining a little bit about what we want to do, so, thank you. Okay, any questions from the public on any things we want to talk about? Yeah, open the public hearing, yes.
Hi, my name is Rosa Rodriguez, I live at three oh seven Asher Way. Um, first, I want to thank Mr. Pace and his staff for donating um, the land, especially for our schools and also for our fire department and um, the multiple areas for park space. And um, yes, to make sure that uh, those homes do pay um, enough in taxes or in assessments to be able to cover the maintenance of those parks. Uh, because right now, I'm in Mayor Park, and I know they try to increase the assessments because they haven't been increased since we bought the homes in nineteen ninety-seven, I believe. And um, that park um, needs a lot of improvement because uh, honestly, you know, i- it's not maintained um, adequately, it was supposed to be a soccer field. Uh, when we bought the homes, there was a contract for that, and um, it, it's okay that it was turned into part, you know, soccer, part uh, baseball field. Um, however, uh, i- it's dangerous for the kids to play out there. And um, the city, I know they have, you know, tried to uh, fix the, the holes and the whole squirrel issue and whatnot. But I also want to make sure that we have adequate staff at City Hall, um, because we need a, a permanent code enforcer. Um, we bought our home, I'm very happy, and you know what he said about um, owning a home? I'm one of the homeowners because I uh, attended here from uh, Ferry Middle School with um, you know, with Artensia. And went to high school together, um, I attended college, came back, and I moved to Salinas and decided to buy a home here for my family because I thought, you know, that it was a um, a good, a good place to live because I've lived here with my parents at Freedom Way since nineteen eighty-six because they were also first time homeowners in that community. Um, my parents bought the home for about seventy-six thousand dollars, we bought our home for about a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars. And our homes are going for about six hundred thousand dollars. And you know, there's a lot of people that have been trying to take our home, but we, we are not selling. Um, right now, we have a lot of issues in our home with rodents. Um, we have issues with, you know, cockroaches from people that do not maintain their yards. I've called the Monterey County Health Department. So you know, just want to make sure that we have adequate staff to make sure that um, one needs to be taken care of in those homes, that we have a nice community. And um, also that we have enough recreational um, space for our kids. We have one community center, it's beautiful, and I, I just passed through there and it's, you know, beautiful. Um, but we also need another community center on the other side because we need more things for our, you know, kids to do out there. Um, I used to work for our school district in the state of Washington, and um, and we also need a senior um, center, you know. Solidad has one, and if we're going to build all those homes, you know, we have to think of a lot of amenities, and I, I'm just grateful for what they're donating and also associated lane. Um, I just want to make sure that it's going to be maintained because if it's going to be part of Gonzalez, well, we know, thank you.
Who here supports paving over a large tract of farmland to build?
Your name, please?
Laura Davis. Who here supports paving over a large tract of farmland to build sprawling market rate homes for Silicon Valley commuters? What about building higher density homes that are affordable to the local community? I'm Laura Davis, Deputy Director of Land Watch. Thank you for the opportunity to comment tonight. Gonzalez should approve higher density alternative four if it wants to provide housing for the Gonzalez community rather than a bedroom community for Silicon Valley. Vista Lucia, as proposed, will be a city-sized subdivision with three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight housing units and two small commercial centers on seven hundred and seventy-one acres northeast of Gonzalez. It will provide the vast majority of new housing for Gonzalez over the next thirty years. Which is why it is critical that decision makers and the community carefully consider the details of the project and ensure that the housing that it built, that it built serves the needs of Gonzalez's working families. The current specific plan and the development agreement rely on two flawed and ineffective approaches to provide affordable housing. Most troubling, they do not actually guarantee affordable units in any way. The first approach involves affordability by design, meaning units whose affordability derives from the zoning density. The second approach relies on a qualified affordable housing organization to build subsidized affordable homes. Even with increased density, the affordability by design units will not be affordable to most people who live or work in Gonzalez where the median income is seventy-four thousand dollars. To put it in context, for a family to afford the cheapest units in the current proposed Vista Lucia development, they would need to earn roughly double that, or a hundred and fifty thousand. Equally problematic, under the second approach, the current plan does not actually require qualified housing organizations to build affordable units. This is a major loophole that the city needs to address. The city should approve alternative four to the preferred project, the high-density alternative described in the final EIR. This alternative would substantially increase plan density and would eliminate or reduce several significant environmental impacts. Higher density, smaller units, and liberalized development standards would make it possible to require that at least five hundred and twenty-five of the fourteen hundred units in the area zone for high density must be affordable to lower or moderate income families. The city rejects alternative four because it believes residents want for sale homes. Elimination of nine hundred and ninety low-density units, which would only be affordable to eight percent of Gonzalez households, would not frustrate those interested in for sale homes. If we're going to sacrifice farmland for development, let's at least use the land intelligently. And in a way that benefits the local community, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis, for your comments. Yes, sir.
Do I push it?
No, it's on, it's on.
Thank you, Ivan Olson, uh, forty-eight C Street, senior citizen. Um, two things that we need to think about in the long term that nobody's talking about. One, the um, addition of a stoplight intersection at the current bridge of Fifth Street and Highway one oh one. If that is not changed or addressed or improved, this whole project will be a problem for the current residents of the city of Gonzalez, that must be addressed. Secondly, the smell from the cattle lot will be a problem in the future if that's not talked about and addressed. Uh, from Ivan Olson's forty-eight C Street, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Olson.
Good evening, city council members and community members. My name is Angelica and I am a young professional working in Salinas and living in Southern County. Uh, thank you, Mr. Brown, for earlier, you mentioned uh, housing teachers, I am a teacher, so uh, and I'd love to live in Gonzalez, I want to be part of this community, I want to put down my roots as well as you mentioned, and also contribute. I want to put down my roots as well, as you mentioned, and also contribute to the local economy. But right now, this isn't an option for many of us. The cost of housing is too high. And that's why I urge you to approve Alternative Four instead of the current Vista Lucia plan. The current proposal does not provide affordable housing for people like me who work in this region and want to live here. Vista Lucia is set to add three thousand four hundred and ninety-eight homes over the next thirty years, yet most will be market-rate homes unaffordable to most local families and young professionals. This is not just a housing issue, it's a workforce issue. Right now, the median income in Gonzalez is sixty-seven, forty thousand, yet to afford even the cheapest homes, as Ms. Davis mentioned. And Vista Lucia, you would need to earn at least a hundred and fifty thousand per year, which is twice the median income. So that means that these homes aren't built for Gonzalez residents. They're being built for higher-income out-of-town buyers, creating a bedroom community for the Bay Area rather than housing the local workforce. The current Vista Lucia plan includes a vague commitment to working with affordable housing developers. However, this does not guarantee that the affordable units will be built as it leaves rooms for interpretation and potential changes in the future. Alternative Four is a better solution because it addresses the key issues of affordability and local workforce housing. It offers a balanced approach to housing development, ensuring the needs of the local community. It increases density in the right areas, creating more housing opportunities at lower prices. It guarantees at least five hundred and twenty-five affordable units, not just a possibility, it's a requirement. It reduces sprawl, making more efficient land use while minimizing the environmental impact. And most importantly, it prioritizes housing for people like me, young professionals, local workers, and families who want to stay in Gonzalez, not just those commuting from the Bay Area. If we convert farmland into housing, we have to do it right, and that means building homes that serve the local community, not just luxury homes that will only support a small percentage, uh, that can't afford. We need homes that foster a sense of community and belonging, not just for a select few. So Gonzalez has an opportunity to make a real difference by approving Alternative Four. So let's ensure that when we build, we build for the people who live and work here. Thank you.
Thank you, Angelica.
Madam Chair, we have several people online, and one of which I know is the Director of CHISP, who's entered in an MO, MOU with the developer, MOA. Um, would it be appropriate on public comment to invite, uh?
Sure.
Taking everybody from? Oh, I'm sorry. I guess after the gallery, I'm, I'm learning here. Thank you.
Okay. Did we have someone else?
Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Dulce Cibrian.
Can you translate for us?
We need the microphone there. She comes to the microphone.
Y me gustaría mucho que se aprobara este proyecto, tanto que es una necesidad muy grande por el que no nada más esta ciudad pasa, sino la mayoría de los lugares están sobrepoblados. La mayoría de las familias viven juntas, nadie puede tener un solo espacio, o vivimos simplemente pagando solamente rentas excesivas. Me gustaría la aprobación por un mejor futuro para nuestros hijos, que sería nuestro principal motivo y es lo que nos motiva más a los papás, porque luchar cada día por nuestros hijos que ellos son nuestra motivación más grande. Me gustaría mucho que mis hijas siguieran creciendo donde han crecido siempre, donde me gustaría que siguieran viviendo en este lugar de tranquilidad, por el cual nadie quiere irse de Gonzales. A todos nos gusta Gonzales por ser una ciudad tranquila y muy, muy a gusto que vivimos todos. Me gustaría mucho que aprobaran este proyecto, sobre todo pensando en el futuro de nuestros hijos, en la seguridad y en el desarrollo saludable para cada una de nuestras familias. Muchas gracias.
Here we have that translated into English.
Good afternoon. My name is Dulce Cibrian, and I'm a resident of Gonzalez. I have been here for almost nineteen years, and I would really like it if this project is approved. Um, we need to, we need better cities. We need better places to live. Right now, our families live in situations where a lot of families have to live together because we just can't afford the cost. Or if we, if we can't afford the cost, we can't, we just can't pay rent and we can't pay anything else. Um, for that, I would like my daughters, that they've lived here, to be able to live here. Uh, that is one of the motivations. I want a better future for our city. And, um, that's why, um, I want my daughters to be able to grow up where they grew. It's a nice city. It's really peaceful. That's why nobody wants to leave Gonzalez, because it's such a, a nice place to live. Um, and we're doing this for the future of our children and for the health and development of our families.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in Spanish? We can have it translated. We have Eddie Lando.
No, no. My name is Mike Rianda, and I've been a resident of, uh, the Gonzalez area for a long, long, long time, so I won't give up age. But, uh, I am for this project. I want to make sure, though, that the road is completed before the sticks go in the ground. We do have a traffic problem here in Gonzalez, as everybody knows. And we need to have that completed before, we need affordable housing. We need medium housing, and we need lots of medium housing. I agree one point with, uh, Land Watch, is the growth of, uh, Silicon Valley headed this way. Maybe they should have been watching in Monterey Peninsula a little harder before they come here to tell us what to do in this part of the country. I mean, agriculture is my background. Agriculture is where I make my money. And covering six, seven hundred acres is going to hurt my business. But we need housing to continue to have the employees that we have, the community that we have. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rianda. Someone else? Anybody through Zoom or? Yes, uh, Ida is going to be the first one speaking.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes, we can.
Ida, we can hear you in the chambers if you'd like to, uh, share your comments.
Can you get it yourself, Ida?
I did. Okay. I just wanted to comment that, um, to me, it seems like, um, the design element is, uh, you know, has, it's very ideal, but it's kind of like putting the cart before the horse. You don't have specific developers in mind, and there's no guarantee, um, how affordable these homes will really be. And I'm speaking especially for the, uh, low-income, high-density units. So, that's, and it's, um, I, I know I don't live in Gonzalez, but it's just, um, an issue that we really need to look at carefully. The affordable housing for a population that's, the median income is seventy-four thousand currently. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Jeffrey Morgan is next.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
This is Jeffrey Morgan. Great. Um, so, I am, uh, as, as was mentioned, I'm the President of CHISP. Uh, we have actually, we're one of the last that actually built housing in the city of Gonzalez. Uh, and we're in a memorandum of understanding with Pembroke Properties. I just wanted to say that, uh, obviously, we are in favor of going forward with this community, with this development. I think it's exciting what this will do to help solve the housing crisis, uh, not only here, but just within Monterey County. Um, there's a lot of steps that have to take place, and it will take a long time for the affordable housing to get built because of the infrastructure that has to get built to bring, to get there. Um, but I just don't want the perfect to be the enemy of the good. I want this to move forward because, um, although higher density is, is great, I'm a huge fan of it. Um, we are in a housing crisis. This is a project that's been over twenty years in the making. Um, Pembroke has been attempting to do this development, and they have something that they are putting together because they have a project that's feasible. So, um, there's been concessions around affordable by design for us. It'll result in over two hundred more units of affordable housing. The timing and financing that we experience as we move forward is very different from what is required for market-rate units. So I recommend that, that we don't, that we have a little bit of freedom in terms of how that timing takes place. Um, we certainly want, don't mind having requirements for the stubouts and infrastructure to come to our affordable housing community as a result of permits, uh, that, for Pembroke subdivisions. But tying it to the building permits itself just slows down the process of creating this housing. So my recommendation is, uh, to please move forward with this. Um, I've seen too many families that were on the verge of homelessness, that are going into our affordable housing communities, and, and by virtue of the fact that we were able to build, um, we were able to hand keys to people that desperately needed it. So, uh, there's a lot more that I've written down about recommendations around timing that I've already sent over by email to the city. Um, and I would just urge approval of, uh, the proposed project. Thank you.
There, there are some folks out there on the doorway that perhaps are not, um, are not, uh, English-speaking, so can we invite them back in so you can introduce, uh, translate?
Y gustan pasar pa, pa dentro. Pasen para dentro en caso de que tengan preguntas.
Yeah. There's quite a few out there.
Pasen todos para dentro en caso de que tengan preguntas.
Por acá, a este lado de acá, pueden pasarse para acá. Pasen para adentro. Okay, I think we've got everybody in. Okay. Is there someone else?
The next one is Darren McBane.
Excuse me, what is the name?
Darren McBane. I don't know if I'm saying that right.
Uh, sorry about that. Good evening, Commissioners. I hope you can hear me okay now.
Yes, we can, Darren.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, Honorable Chair and members of the Commission, Darren McBane here. I'm a staff member with the Local Agency Formation Commission of Monterey County. Uh, LAFCO is a state-created public agency that's responsible for boundary changes to cities and special districts throughout Monterey County. And LAFCOs were created by the state legislature in nineteen sixty-three to encourage the orderly formation of local government agencies, preserve agricultural land resources, discourage urban sprawl, and ensure the efficient delivery of local government services. The proposed project would be a very significant expansion of the city of Gonzalez, both in terms of acreage and as a percentage increase to the city's, uh, land area and population. The project site is almost all existing farmland, so the overall Vista Lucia project also involves converting about one point two square miles of productive farmlands to urban-type development. In terms of today's meeting, LAFCO submitted, uh, a letter last Wednesday to the city, and the letter's main focus is on the project's environmental impact report, uh, particularly the section of the EIR that addresses the project's impacts to farmland and the mitigation measures that are being proposed in the EIR to offset those impacts. LAFCO's letter last week restates comments that LAFCO made on the draft EIR in March of last year. And in summary, our letter is saying that, uh, because this project will require a LAFCO approval, the EIR should be using LAFCO's ag mitigation guidelines and not the city's municipal, uh, farmland preservation ordinance as the standard for mitigating the project's impacts to farmland. And in this way, the commission, LAFCO, will be able to use the city's EIR as the legally-required environmental clearance for the SECA process, uh, uh, for the LAFCO process, rather, and be able to approve an annexation proposal when the city submits a proposal to LAFCO. Uh, in short, our letter is saying that because the Vista Lucia project needs LAFCO approval, the EIR's mitigation measure should provide that the project will meet LAFCO's ag mitigation guidelines rather than a different standard, such as the city's municipal ordinance. And I think just this evening, I, uh, I, I believe I heard Mr. Islama, uh, say in his comments that, uh, the city is planning to, uh, revise that mitigation measure, uh, which is very encouraging to hear. Uh, it's just that we have not seen that language yet, uh, hence what is, uh, therefore, you know, what's it, what's in our letter. And, uh, 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 I, I'd just like to mention also one aspect of LA, uh, AGs, uh, LAFCO's ag mitigation requirements, uh, is that the guidelines, uh, of LAFCO do provide that when an annexation project will result in the loss of farmland, uh, then LAFCO's guidelines, uh, allow payment of an in lieu ag mitigation fee to a qualified land trust to provide funding, uh, for the land trust to pu, uh, purchase conservation easements as opportunity sites do become available in the future. Uh, this is an option that's available if an applicant makes a good faith effort to purchase conservation easements on other nearby farmlands to permanently protect those lands and keep them in production, and if that good faith effort determines that there are no suitable conservation easement receiver sites available. Uh, we noticed that in the Planning Commission packet, uh, that was released last Friday afternoon, there is a staff report attachment G, which is a memo that describes things that the developer has done to date to, uh, meet LAFCO's good faith requirements. Uh, this memo is the, is the first LAFCO, uh, has seen of this information about the outreach that has been done so far regarding conservation easements, uh, and the other.
Mr. McBane, you hit your three minutes. I'm sorry.
The next one is Matt Werther.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can, Matt. Thank you.
Great. Uh, good evening, Commissioners. Matt Werther, Housing and Community Development Director with the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. MBEF consists of public, private, and civic entities located throughout Monterey, San Benito, and Santa Cruz Counties with the mission to improve the economic health and quality of life through initiatives in housing, broadband, economic development. Our housing initiative's primary objective is to increase the production of new housing across our region to address the broad needs of our workforce. Vista Lucia is a major development proposal that includes over, uh, almost thirty-five hundred housing new homes, uh, involving a range of unit types and affordability levels with walkable parks, schools, safety facilities, the neighborhood-scale shopping. While we have not officially endorsed this project at this time, we offer these comments and recommendations. MBEF has a history of collaborative and recommendations. MBF has a history of collaboration with the city of Gonzales on the Vista Lucia project specifically focusing on supporting the city's efforts to ensure the feasibility of the affordable housing components. The convening of affordable housing developers we conducted in coordination with the city staff has helped to lead to the partnership with Chispa, just as an example. And we look forward to continuing to assist the city as you move forward. At this time, we propose revisions to the specific plan and development agreement to strengthen the provision of affordable housing in Vista Lucia. The development should include a mandate that explicitly requires the master developer to deed affordable parcels with stub outs and all infrastructure and offsites constructed to block six and block 25 concurrently to the start of other phases. This will help ensure the feasibility of fruit, future affordable housing development on these parcels without hampering the creation of moderate and market rate housing. Affordable housing requires subsidies which are historically volatile, especially with the current federal administration. MBF also recommends relaxing the development standards outlined in the Vista Lucia specific plan in order to actually achieve more affordability by design. We've created a white paper that goes into much detail about how this can be achieved. We have five policies that go into more detail. Generally speaking, streamlining permitting and reducing discretionary reviews can help, uh, bring those housing to the forefront quicker and reduce risk to developers, um, and have alignment with state programs as well. Number two, increase allowable densities. Uh, considering increasing the density actually can help rain, uh, the density range, rather, to help ensure developers have flexibility. You heard, uh, the notion of flexibility mentioned, uh, by others, including Chispa, one of the development partners. Uh, reform impact fees. Uh, one example is to help ensure that the city's impact fees are based on per square foot to help incentivize smaller, more affordable homes. Increase funding sources for affordable housing. The city's housing element outlines programs that need to be implemented. That should also be prioritized to help make sure.
Morgan, I have a question for you. Are you looking at the, the map here? Is that okay?
Uh, I believe we still have a speaker or two more.
Okay. I'll ask this question later. Okay, next speaker, please.
One more speaker, Luis Vargas.
Good evening. Uh, this is Luis Vargas, 1501 Champagne Way in Gonzales and, uh, long, longtime resident all my life. Uh, my great, uh, my grandmother, sorry, was, uh, one of our, uh, first family members to be a resident here in Gonzales in the 1960s, uh, with my two uncles and then my dad followed. Um, they found, uh, Gonzales to be their home and to be their place, uh, to fulfill their dreams and to nurture their families. And we grew up in Gonzales, Ninth Street and Center Street, and now, uh, we're able to expand and grow. Most of my family is here in Gonzales or in Solidad. Um, we are a product of this community from Head Start through Gonzales High School and moved on. Uh, most of us went to college. We found our way back home, even though we worked in Silicon Valley or in other places. Uh, we want to continue that. We want to continue it with our children, our grandchildren, and providing opportunities for homes for them would be ideal for this community. Um, we have teachers in our family, principals, um, and I know that we're looking for homes for them. If they can continue to live here, um, they would be able to afford. I know that everyone is saying that it's not affordable for the incomes that they're earning. I just confirmed what they're earning and they would qualify and they could purchase a home. So please continue with the project. Build the homes that we need. And we thank you very much, City of Gonzales and Pembroke and everyone working on the project.
Thank you so much for your comments. One more?
Nobody else, yes.
Hi, my name is Peter Gertjes. Um, I'm also a lifetime, uh, resident here of Gonzales. My grandparents lived here. My parents lived here. Um, I raised my family here. Both my children live here and they're raising my grandchildren here. Um, we are in favor of this project. It's long overdue. Um, it's very well planned and I do also feel that the majority of people will be able to afford this. Part of the problem that we have, why we're in the housing crunch is because Gonzales has not built a house in 20 years. And if we continue to go back to the drafting board and come up with another plan, such as Land Watch wants, it's going to be another 20 years before, before we build another house. So I just want to encourage us to move forward and do something, build something. It's long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you. Taffin, before we go on, I have a question on the map that is numbered here.
Uh, Madam Chair, if you would close.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
I have two letters.
Oh, one more?
Two emails.
Oh, okay.
The first one is from Ida Nishimura. I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing the last name. Uh, we, uh, got this email, um, today at 1:59 PM and here's what it reads. Chairperson Gloria Velazquez and Planning Commissioners, City of Gonzales Planning Commission. I am not going to men, mensual words. In, if the median income level is about 75,000, how are homes that, that start at 450,000, 100,000 really affordable? This project is clearly not being built for Gonzales community. You are only going to encourage this need and despairs in many members of this community, a concerned citizen. Monterey, Monterey County resident. The second email is from Felie, Felisa. Was received today at 3:34 PM. And here is what it says. I am writing to support the recommendations made by Land Watch in their March 7, 2025 letter regarding the draft housing element. I also want to emphasize my total disagreement over the staff recommendation to increase the total acreage, acreage for this housing project as being irresponsible. Urban sprawl should be limited. We cannot continue to build gigantic houses in the old ways. Resources are not unle, unlimited. Also, why should development projects be held to include only 20% affordable units? Clearly Monterey County needs more affordable housing than that and it's, it needs it quickly. We only need to look at the Vista Lucia project that with its high prices to see that it is not, it's not being designed for Gonzales community. What are we doing to bring this charge about, change about? More of the same. I recommend searching modular homes volum, volumetric building company in Tracy, California. A very concerned resident. Felisa, who, I can't say the last name. Can't pronounce it.
Is there one more? You mentioned three, no? Okay. So any more public, public?
So, Madam Chair, would it be appropriate to close the public hearing now and bring the questions back to, uh, yourself and our developer?
Okay. So did you have a question? Uh, anyone else? No? Okay, so then we'll close public hearing? Okay. Okay, council discussion? Uh, I just have a question for, for you, Taffin.
Yes, please.
On, on the map here that has the blocks numbered? We talked about, a lot about, uh, block six and 25. Section seven is also in that same color. So what is section seven?
Uh, section seven would also be apartment density, high density apartments, but not necessarily the market rate.
Oh, okay. Okay, so it's not part of the, uh, the Lincoln housing.
No, that's the, uh, yeah, on number six, that's where the developer would be, uh, donating the land to underwrite the cost of construction.
But seven is not part of that.
That's correct.
I just wondered because it was the same color, so I didn't know there was.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, those different colors are those menu price points here. Um. So, Madam Chair, did you or other Commissioners have questions of staff or the applicants that you'd like to, uh, um, tease out here?
Based on what we've been learning for months, several years, uh, anyone have a question for one to discuss?
One concern or question I have in and around, one of, uh, the speakers came up is, is addressing the old part of the city, how the impact as the new comes in and especially that kind of crossover highway lights expansion. Is that something that's also part of this? If, once that gets developed, to work on that street to, uh, to obviously mitigate congestion on this side to get over to that side, like new?
You know, not, not directly working into the, the city, but the consideration for how to get new traffic and new trips to the 101. There is the extension of Fano Road associated to provide that independence. Uh, granted, there's only one high school right now.
Correct.
Okay, but as you can see, as this community grows with the different colors of blue, it might be that by the time it's, uh, halfway built that we change one of those blues to a high school. But there's also the red colors that are commercial districts, um, and different affordability, uh, different levels of affordability. So the, like, the commercial would be that you can have a sandwich shop or, uh, uh, there's a Starbucks or some local serving retail in there. So there's, there's the intent to have that mix of uses so that people aren't forced into their cars all the time to go elsewhere. But, um, Carmen, did you have something to say there?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, there are also trigger points. So when it hits a certain amount of housing, there'll be studies done to, to figure out what the mitigation needs on that, in that area are. So there are trigger points attached in the DA and the list, and the conditions of approval that will require additional, uh, studies done at a certain point so that we understand what, how to mitigate some of those traffic concerns.
Right, and you mentioned trigger points because that, it feels like the commercial comes at a later time. So those folks have to shop on this side of town, right, per se, when the first phases. So that creates what is already a tough spot there for, until the trigger points kind of kick in and, and then that you could assess if you can do something about the traffic. Got it.
Okay. To add on that, just on that question, um, on the congestion and possible traffic issue, I, I believe one of the, um, I can't remember, was, was Mr., um, Sushal Marak represented that before the first house is built, I understand that there is going to be a connection from Fano to what's now associated lane, correct?
Then, that is correct.
Okay.
In addition, remember that there are impact fees that are paid for other improvements to the city. So one of those is Fifth Street. One of those is Fano, Harold Parkway, improvements to that intersection. Um, the traffic study identifies all those types of improvements and to city manager's point and perhaps to the public works director, there's timing that those things go into effect. But money is paid for traffic fees will also cover, it's not just that Fano Road and that, um, Vista Lucia Parkway. It covers Harold, Harold and, uh, Fano with Fifth Street, the bridge, the, you know, um, whatever signalization that was mentioned that may happen. Um, that's a part of it, but it's all based on traffic counts and things like that when those things happen.
Okay, to add to, to this point that we're talking about, um, what about the South Bridge? Anything happening?
To help. On the southern side?
Yeah, uh-huh.
So. Um, with the last annexation that you re, that you reviewed, eventually, once the development happens, there's a connection from Harold Parkway down to Gloria Road, um, that will be available. There's also residential development down there that'll, that would feed into that area. There's not specific improvements to that intersect, interchange right now as a part of this project because most traffic will either take the northern one or the Fifth Street. Um, but it's all part of the plans, uh, as soon as Harold Parkway is connected at some point to Gloria Road.
And that.
Through other developments will do that.
And another one is that, uh, the homes are going to be building stages, right? They started a certain area and whatever. But what about the schools? As those families come in, our schools are already way beyond capacity, all of them. So those, like he says, are going to be coming this way until the schools over there are built. What's the plan there?
Well, the plan that the, the master developer has offered that blue box on Fano Road, 12 acres to the Gonzales Unified School District. The cost of land is taken care of. It will be on the district with their impact fees or other, other financial resources to find a way to build a school.
Yeah, but my real question is, is when are they going to be built? If you're going to have a lot of families coming in with young kids that are going to be going to our schools on this side, uh, when are they going to be built so that they can have their own school?
They just don't have that crystal ball, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Okay. Am I correct to say that the school actually already has that in plan? I believe there's a bond, if I'm not wrong, that they're thinking of doing. I mean, it's, I think, from hearing this school board meeting, I think they already have a plan for that. But then that falls on the school, not on the.
Yeah, yeah. The building, the building part of it would be to the school or is it the city? The building, the building of the new school, that's up to the, to the school district now?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct. But I, I do want to emphasize that they, um, the developers also, uh, in an, uh, in, in the process of going through an agreement with the school district. So the school district is already on board.
Okay.
Board. And what I mean by that is they're thinking about how to fund this and make this happen, um, for, for their students in the future because you're absolutely right. Their schools are impacted and desperately need another school. So that, that is, um, right off the bat, the donation of that land goes to the schools. So this, that is the school's responsibility. So we can't speak to the school, uh, work, but they are already working on something.
Okay.
Plan for this.
Uh, Madam Chair and Commissioner Vargas, uh, we have seen that they've suggested, uh, land use, you know, layouts and design where, where the parking should be, what part of the school, where the ball fields. So we know they're advanced thinking this and having those discussions with the school district.
Okay. Alex, you're next.
Sure. Everyone, everyone looks at me for all the questions. I asked all my questions last time. I asked about, um, traffic circles on the entrance where the shell is, and I believe it's on the website already. So they did address that. They addressed the whole widening of the freeway, uh, but no, um, but it does still narrow down, you said. Is there a way to get that property possibly through eminent domain or?
The interesting thing is the, uh, only two lanes on both sides road around here right now is Highway 101, you know, so single lane roads can take a lot of traffic and, and do it pretty well. And it wouldn't be until much later phases after we've collected a good body of feeds that, um, that may be in the mix. But that little section is, uh, is in a capital project program. Um, not quite sure, but it would be, um, in, in the future. The, the single lane is there now and will be developed. Uh, but that can take a lot of traffic. Mr. Dobbins, did you have anything that would clarify that anymore?
Well, just that the construction of the, what, associated lane, widening it and then Fano extension, is it the impact fee program? Yes. And that also includes the acquisition of the right of way.
So the answer is it's planned for.
And I just wanted to say, I, you guys answered a lot of my questions and I appreciate that on the website. You guys have put in a lot of work. So, good job.
Thank you.
Thank you. So you, you do have the developer in the room, the E I R consultant, and you have staff here. But if you don't have any further questions, we can kind of call the slide up and walk through the resolutions if you wish.
I do, I just, first of all, thank you to everybody involved to make sure that this is detailed as much as they can be, and thank you to staff for this project. It's been a long time waiting. I think that the concern for our residents is on the affordable housing aspect of it. I'm familiar with the process, so I understand those concerns, but I think the project is well-built. I support it, and I would do have a question as far as the first phase. What percentage of that would be considered affordable under the design?
Well, if you, if you look at the design on the map, we kind of use the word price points, right? So the, the yellow, the brightest, is kind of the starting where the, on the bottom left of this image is where the existing utilities and infrastructure are likely the start of construction. And those are single-family market rate homes with that light color. And as you progress towards that center of town and the red dot there, the density of lots gets smaller. And they're also likely, you know, a little bit later construction. So what we have planned and built into the, and with the knowledge in our development agreement is that's where the construction is going to start, is with the development of, that number is one here, and that's near Fano. And that, the person who builds that will be responsible for those road improvements, right? And then who builds number two and three are going to be responsible for carrying those common road improvements. And what we insisted on in the D A was that those two market rate neighborhoods would provide the infrastructure that's going to serve Block Six, which is the apartment density block that the Chisbo wants to have an M O, has an M O A with us to provide apartment units for. So it's built in that that infrastructure, that that will have its utilities stubbed to it. And as Speaker Mr. Bartab mentioned earlier, the city had convened a gathering of affordable housing builders, together, what do you need? And said, well, we can't really have an island of a piece out there, and you can't really be the first people providing water, sewer, and roads. But if we had utilities stubbed to our property, now that's, that's an enticing piece of property that we'd often gain. And so that's what's built in here for affordable housing and for, so at the, out of the front chute will probably be market rate homes. But even the first fifty, that hundred will be the first fifteen, a hundred that hasn't been built here in how many, how long? You know, just availability of units to the supply is going to have a moderating effect on, on other houses in the community. Likely a move-up effect, so it's a big, long answer.
Okay. First of all, I, I'm glad that we have a good audience today, more so than other times. And I just hope that we can continue to have more meetings like this and those that are here today will go over and talk to your friends and your family members so that they can also know what's going on and be informed, so thank you again for coming.
Before you are not only the letter, the comments that we used to have those there, but the new packet are six. Six resolutions. The first one, as I mentioned earlier, is the acting on the environmental document. And the last one is a recommendation to council that we ask LAFCO to bring this into our city limits. So, you know, the resolutions are about three pages, but they have the exhibits and the attachments, correct? The attached, the first one is the E I R, and the draft E I R mitigation monitoring and reporting program as well as, that's about it, isn't it? Pardon me? And we have an errata on the environmental. So we're going to recommend that for the letter from LAFCO, and it said we kind of, we forgot to mention more forcefully that we're going to follow the LAFCO agricultural policies. That's a stronger mitigation than the one that's in the E I R. But we can, we can add that here as we go with our recommendation to city council. Have a little errata that we're going to substitute out the mitigation for agricultural mitigation, the way it's written, mirroring the city's new ordinance, but to acknowledge we're going to follow the LAFCO. So that's, that's in the mix.
Haven, so that's addressing the fellow Darren's concerns about not being, every bit of what you're saying addresses those concerns.
So a, a motion for the approval of the first resolution would include the recommendation to the city council to adopt an errata, which would then adopt the LAFCO policy for ag mitigation as opposed to the current language, which says the, the city's policy for ag mitigation. That will address LAFCO's primary concern.
So do we need to make a motion to adopt each one of these individually?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay, but do we need to ask the audience if they have any questions on each one of these? No.
You ought to do that during the public conference.
This is, this is the planning commission show, so.
Okay, so we're going to go over and talk about, I mean, try to adapt these. So number one is, is there, do we have a motion to adopt Resolution Number P C two zero two five zero one? A resolution of the planning commission of the city Gonzales recommending to the city council certification of this Vista Lucia project final environmental impact report and adoption of the mitigation monitoring program, reporting program.
And the referral of the errata.
Yeah, and that, and that recommendation, or that motion includes the recommendation to the city council to adopt the errata, okay?
This packet right here. I move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a first and second to adopt the Resolution twenty-five, twenty, twenty-two-five dash one. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so Resolution twenty-five, twenty-two-five dash one passes, adopted. Okay, number two. Adopt Resolution P C twenty-two-five dash two, which is the resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council approval of the recommend, adjustment, amendment of the Gonzales general plan and approval of the Vista Lucia specific plan.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution P C twenty-two-five dash two. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council approval of the amendment to the Gonzales general plan and approval of the Vista Lucia plan.
Okay, do we have a second for this one?
I second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Madam Chair, a motion made, like, like you just heard here, could, could, could read, could share what they want. I don't know necessarily if Jeff announced his form, but that's fine.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it.
You're doing fine.
Okay.
You're doing just fine.
Okay, next, number thirty. Adopt Resolution P C two zero two-five dash two, a resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council adoption of the ordinance approving the pre-zoning of the Vista Lucia project area to zoning districts designated in a Vista Lucia specific plan.
I believe that was Resolution number three, but guess.
Number three, yes. Motion to approve? Motion to approve, yes.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number four, adopt Resolution P C two zero two-five dash four. A resolution of the planning commission, the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council adoption of an ordinance approving a development agreement by and between the City of Gonzales and Cielo Grande Ranch, L L C relative to the development known as Vista Lucia. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second that motion.
Favor, only favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. Number four, five. Okay, adopt Resolution Number P C two zero two-five dash five. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council approval of a tentative map of seven-hundred-and-ninety-six building lots accommodating one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven units and forty-nine common lots on a project site of two-hundred-and-thirty-five-point-five-plus acres located east of Fano Road. Monterey County Assessor's Parcel Number two-two-three-zero-three-one-zero-two-seven and zero-two-four. Is there a motion? Motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay. Adoption Resolution Number P C two zero two-five zero six. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Gonzales recommending to the city council approval of the initiation of seven-hundred-and-seventy-one acre annexation, annexation request with the Monterey County Local Agency Format Commission, also known as LAFCO. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve two zero two-five dash zero six.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we have gone through six resolutions, and it looks like we're on our way. So we found that, okay, any, I'm sorry?
No, I'm excited for, I'm excited for the city, thank you. I just don't have the agenda right in front of me to see the next item, which is probably standard fare to close the meeting.
Okay, so we're closing this section. We've, we've adopted all of those six resolutions, so we'll go on to the business from the planning commission. Anything new?
Nope.
I don't have anything, but I'd like to just remind our public that we do have a car show on the fifth of April here at the city, so any residents interested in participating, any vendors, please join all the hard work that our city staff is doing on April fifth at Four Street, am I not correct? On Four Street for the car show.
What was the date, April?
April fifth.
Okay. Close that section four, then we'll go on to number five. Business from the Community Development Director.
I have nothing to add.
Your turn.
I have nothing to add right now, thank you very much.
You don't. Okay, so we've all worked very, very hard on this project and I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I'm happy for our community. And I think that we will all be happy, and I think we will all be able to satisfy all income units, income sections. I really do. I, I really think that we, we've needed this for a long, long time. It seems like we're finally getting there. And I think it's not just for people outside of our community, but it, most importantly, for our community first. So I hope that you go home and you tell your friends and your neighbors and anybody you know that wants to come to Gonzales or is already here that we are moving on, and I'm really thankful for that, and thank you all for coming. Okay. It's almost eight o'clock, so are we ready to adjourn?
Yes, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second that motion.
Okay, everybody approved? Everybody want to go home?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all again.